Good morning. We will call the meeting to order on Tuesday, September 17th, 2013. First item is the approval of the agenda.
Please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There are no citizens to be heard. Next item is the approval of the minutes for September 3rd and 13th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. This time we will pay the bills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid. Chief, let's go to you for a committee report if you may.
Okay, let's see. Yesterday I had Land of Advance and Sky Area ATC and Aging Meeting and just general business issues there and we went over our annual audit with our auditor and everything was in order there. And this morning we had a Personnel Issues Committee meeting and the topic, main topic of discussion there was the Healthcare Savings Plan for elected officials and we came to some resolutions and we'll be bringing them to the board I think next week, so.
Frank?
Wednesday, Wednesday I attended the council governments, Fargo County Council Governments, where they were coming out plans for 20-year plan and was involved in a group functions where we decided what would be good plans to do, what roads to do in the next 20 years. That was just a meeting that people, a lot of people were invited to go to. Thursday, part of the, I went to Soil and Water Conservation District and we started out with a fall tour of Clay County. So we took a few sites of different things that they've done during the year. After that, we had a meeting at 2:00 and mostly routine stuff there.
Kevin?
Okay, last week on the 10th, we had our Insurance Committee meeting of which we will, it's our topic on the agenda for this morning, so that'll, we went through the various rate changes and proposals and then there's recommendations we'll be hopefully acting on today. On the 11th, we had the Diversion Authority Public Outreach Committee meeting and we, at that meeting, we basically did a recap of the meeting that we had with the Minnesota residents, one in Comstock, or with the Comstock and with the landowners. And we had some discussions about the need to follow up, John, for example, with those Comstock people and moving forward with, you know, because the Corps is in their preliminary design and so we need to really make sure that there's some feedback from them as far as getting their needs incorporated into that design. So we're going to work on who we need to contact for follow-up, because that was kind of left, kind of open there. There was, at that meeting, I think there was more participation amongst the residents in terms of, they were the ones who were throwing the things out on the table that needed discussion about needs as opposed to the mayor and council. So we have to, we have to get some better coordination there with them on that. And then, of course, then the next day was the main diversion authority meeting and, John, you were out of the country, but the big news that came out of that meeting was our authority, we had gone into executive session to discuss the litigation, the lawsuit that was proposed and when we came out of that, we voted unanimously to ask the judge to let us join in that lawsuit as a participating agency. And I don't know if Jenny wants to add to that, but we just felt that, we just wanted to make sure that our case is fully heard within that process and we thought the best way to do that was to be a participant in it. And the judge is the one who will decide that. And Jenny, if you want to come in.
Sure. I mean, generally, the lawsuit is the Wilkin-Richland Joint Powers suing the Army Corps of Engineers. The basic allegation, you know, if you had to kind of sum it up is that the Army Corps didn't really do all the homework necessary before putting these plans into place and they want to essentially slow us down and have everybody take another look at the decisions that were made. So those are the two parties to the suit right now. They're Wilkin-Richland, Joint Powers, and the Army Corps. Department of Justice will represent the Army Corps. There's an attorney that's already assigned, but the concern is that the diversion authority, because the community has so much at stake and has so much money invested, should really have some input in the lawsuit if the judge will let us. So the vote was to file a motion to intervene into the lawsuit and the judge will have to decide whether or not he will let us join that suit. If he allows us to, we will be a party just like the other two and have opportunity to make argument or advance different positions during the lawsuit. So, and like Kevin said, that was a unanimous vote by the diversion authority, so we're moving forward with that. Currently, we'll file that motion before mid-October.
Thank you, Jenny. And then, a little later on in that meeting, and we, obviously we discussed the, how we finance that and currently in the budget that's out there for the next year, there's a $70 million budget out there and there's dollars set aside for legal. And I did ask the Finance Committee of the diversion authority to come back to our board, hopefully by the next meeting, with the plan in place that can show, or shows how we're going to fund this without having to go, you know. I told them that we had to find the dollars within that 70 million to do this. We shouldn't be going back to, my, basically, what I was getting at was I didn't think we should go back to the entities to be asking for more money to do this. And I thought there was sufficient dollars there already to. There's two components in terms of a cost to, as Jenny said, the legal term is to intervene. And one is the cost just to see if you can be qualified to intervene and then, of course, then there's the cost after that. In terms of, the judges will also then determine to what level they will allow us to intervene. They'll only, you know, he might put restrictions on what we can even present. And so during that process, and of course, during that process, there would be more dollars that would be needed to cover that. And my statement to the diversion authority was, is we need to be prepared to find those funds for both aspects of it through what we currently have in our budget.
John?
Let me get this straight. So now the diversion authority is suing the Corps?
No, no, no. We are, we are asking to be a party along with the Corps. We want to support the Corps.
Okay.
They want to be named as a defendant.
You said that we were with the other, the other two counties?
No.
No. The suit currently is Wilkin-Richland versus Army Corps.
They want to be included as a defendant.
Defendant, oh.
Oh, we just want to be included as a party. We wouldn't be called a defendant, we'd be called an intervener and we'd be free to advance whatever position we felt. I mean.
Our goal is to support.
Yes.
Or possibly even give additional information to what the Corps might be providing that's they're doing to defend their case.
Right.
We are going to try to help defend the Corps' case.
And really, the level of proof that we need to succeed on that initial motion to intervene is we have to show the judge that we have interests that aren't fully covered by the Army's representation. And everyone, legal counsel seemed to agree that we would be able to make that case. But the level to which we will be allowed to intervene would be the biggest question. So, but that's the criteria that we would have to meet. And that's the, that's how we're going forward at this point, is to make that initial motion.
Okay, so as participants in the, with the, for Clay County to be, as participants with the authority, we are now in a position to be opposed to a large portion of my district?
No, no. I wouldn't say that, John. I would say that we are, we are supportive of the Corps and what the project's intent is to do, fully understanding that there are more issues that need to be resolved within your district. That, right now, I would say we're probably not real happy with either as a full board. And so, we're still going to work on those issues to improve, you know, just like you're on that egg policy committee now. We're trying to find ways to resolve some of the issues that are out there. And even our Minnesota legislatures have said we've got to try to find ways to get rid of those impacts on the Minnesota side. So we're, you know, we, the answer is yes, we're supporting the Corps, but when it comes to what's, we know the impacts are near district, but we're also going to still try to reduce those, or at least, you're never going to be able to eliminate them, but how you mitigate them is going to be still extremely important.
Okay.
John, any committee reports?
No, I have no committee reports.
Okay. On Tuesday, September 10th, I had the Clay County Insurance Committee, Kevin has covered that. And then today, September 17th, Personnel Issues Committee, which Grant covered. And at this time, we will call on Darren Brooke and Jennifer Pearson for the 2014 insurance renewal. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good.
Good. All right. Well, it's that time of the year again, but Jennifer makes her appearance. And I just want to say that Jennifer's done an excellent job of keeping up with all of this benefit information and especially with the Affordable Care Act and all that going into effect this year, next year. And so she's really stayed on top of that. And I think we're in a pretty good position right now to accommodate all those changes that are coming down the pipe. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer and she'll go through the packet with you.
Good morning. Really, the only thing I put in your packet was the memo and then the rates. Everything highlighted in yellow is basically what we're looking at for changes for 2014. So I'll just start out with the health insurance rates. Last year, for 2013, we received an 11% increase on our health insurance rates. And for 2014, we're looking at a 7% increase for our insurance rates. So you can see how each of the plans will change with that additional increase there. And then down below here, the county contribution, we added that increase. And as you know, we do take half of the county contribution increases given to the county, is given to us, and then 50% of that is passed on to the employees due to how it's written in the union contracts. So the increase for the full-time employees would go from 836 to 888 after rounding it, because it's a $51, 50 cent increase, which is half of the 103. We take half of the triple gold family, which is what we pass along for that. And inside those rates, it does include some fees for healthcare reform that have been passed down to us through our rates from Lakes Country. There's a patient-centered outcomes fee that's $2 per covered life and there's also a reinsurance fee that's $63 per covered life. We are supposed to pay those to the IRS and then Lakes Country reimburses us, but how they've done that is pass it down to us through our premiums. And we'll also see some differences there next year because there are some more healthcare reform things going into our health insurance, such as there will be no pre-existing exclusions any longer. They're taking those away for anybody over the age of 19. Currently, that's just 19 and younger. And also, dependents under the age of 26 will be allowed to stay on the plan even if they have employer-sponsored coverage. So there's, and there's also going to be additional preventative care services that'll be inside the health insurance plan, which since we, as grandfather plans, we had the right to not take those into our plans, but in 2012, we did accept the new preventative care package. So in years forward, we have to continue to do that. So that's all reflected in the increases that we're seeing here. In regard to our dental plan, we did receive suggested funding from Dental Service Corp., which is actually Blue Cross National of North Dakota now for 2014. And they did suggest an increase slightly to our plan. We are, as of August, tracking slightly below in our funding levels, so we did recommend by the insurance committee to accept their increased rates, which is a $2 increase for single and a $5 increase for family. Our other insurance premiums for the life insurance, basic and supplemental, will remain the same. Long-term care will remain the same. Long-term disability will remain the same. And we did receive that 15% rate reduction as of August 1st because we switched over to Madison National Life in regard to long-term disability. And vision, we are entering a two-year, year two of a two-year rate guarantee there, so those premiums will also remain the same. The only other increase we're going to see is for our participant fee for select account. We do currently pay $1.83 per member per month. That will increase to $2.11 in 2014 per member per month, and that is paid by the county based on board approval back in 2007. And that is the first increase they've seen in the last nine years. So that's been passed through to us as well. And so that's everything that we're going to see in regard to increases for our rates. Does anybody have any questions on that sheet? One of the other items we needed to discuss was our grandfathered status. The second bullet on your memo is whether or not we want to continue to be grandfathered for the next year. We have to make that determination annually. Last year, grandfathered status didn't really do much for the county, but in 2014, it will protect us from some plan design changes. Under healthcare reform, there's going to be out-of-pocket maximum limits for single and family coverage. And currently, with three of our plans, triple gold, double gold, and CMM, the fact that we have unlimited coverage for our prescriptions, meaning their copays, that would make us not compliant under the healthcare reform out-of-pocket maximum limits. So in order to keep our plans as they are for another year, we would have to grandfather the plans. Changing those plan designs would either result in slight additional premium increases because we would have to put the prescription drugs as part of the medical out-of-pocket maximum, or we would have to keep it separate as our VIBA plan does. Or in order to make it cost neutral, then our medical out-of-pocket maximums would increase to keep the RX in there. Another thing we learned is that if we do not keep our grandfathered status, we would not be considered to be minimum value compliant in regard to healthcare reform with those three plans because of the RX coverage. So those are the two protections it gives us for 2014.
John?
How does that affect us for 15? Is it, do we need to grandfather, continue to grandfather each year?
We have to make that decision annually. Yeah. And for 2015, it's up in the air. There could be additional regulations that come down through the ACA that grandfathered status protects us from. Could be a year where we don't see much protection. Just depends on what comes through each year.
But we're able to continue with the grandfathering each year?
Well, that's true, but what they may do is they may expand on what services we may need to offer to continue to be grandfathered.
Oh.
Right.
So there's always, there's always that potential that, you know, for example, the first year we grandfathered, we had to add certain coverages to our policy. And I think a lot of them had to do with women's issues, right?
Right.
Am I correct on that?
Women's preventative services.
Yeah, preventative services. And we needed to add those just to make sure that we would be compliant and stay within the grandfather abilities.
Yes, and that's why they ask us to determine that each year, because each year it may not be. Also, one of the things we need to consider is, we have been meeting a few times now in the insurance committee to discuss a portfolio change, meaning talking about maybe getting rid of the double gold plan because of some tax implications coming down the pipe, and implementing a VIBA HSA combo plan with a 3125 deductible. And that new plan, any new plan we bring in comes in non-grandfathered and we can't change that status. So as we move forward, we'll either have to have some grandfathered and non-grandfathered plans or we can decide whether, how we want to go forward with that.
What's our current numbers for each of the plans? Do you have that, Ruffey?
I did have that at the insurance committee, but I didn't bring the demographics with me.
I only have one copy.
I believe our most utilized plans are still the triple gold and the VIBA is climbing in popularity.
And all of this has gone through the committee?
All of these, yeah.
Plus the grandfathering?
Exactly.
Okay.
You know, I, my one comment on this and the thing that frustrated me to some degree when I expressed at the Ted meeting was this rate increase that Select Account was raising our rates from 183 to 211. I wasn't so much opposed to the raising of the rates because they hadn't done it in 10 years, but at the same point in time, they said basically the services they were going to provide us was going to go down. So they were going to provide less services and ask us to pay more. And I just always struggle with that one. So, but it's, it is what it is in that industry, I guess.
Do we have a motion to approve, or Jennifer has in front of us?
She'll move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you, Jennifer, for all you've done.
Thank you.
Very well. Appreciate it. Brian, can you give us your update, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, I guess I'd like to address is the, on our road tour on Thursday, which Commissioner Gross and I attended, a gentleman mentioned to me, he said, "I watch a lot of the commissioners' meetings." And he said, "If you're open to a little positive critique," he said, "I'm wondering if you could get the commissioners to speak into the mics?" And I said, "You know, we've heard that comment before and we appreciate that feedback." And then he went on to say that, you know, "Do you think maybe lapel mics or something like that would be better?" Because, you know, you guys sit back from your chairs and things. Do you want to pursue that at all? Or, I mean, are you just want us to try to be more conscious of speaking into the mic? I know some are very good at moving up and adjusting the mic. I noticed that Commissioner Gross did that this morning when he spoke. And, but I know sometimes we sit back and we get into discussion and we totally lose the audience that we're speaking to.
Even if one is speaking in the mic, you have to have your television turned way up to hear it regardless.
Okay.
I don't know what the reason for that is, but anytime you turn that on and it's on television, you have to turn it way up where the one is next to the mic.
Can't we control that in the, in the audio room?
I don't know. It's not a problem.
We could certainly look into that. And I guess if you wanted me to pursue some other options or whatever, you know, that, I guess I'm noticing it right now. When I speak right next to the mic, it kind of echoes in here and it comes out pretty loud. But if I sit back here, I don't hear anything. I don't know how well you hear me there, but...
I think the main problem is that we don't even think about the television.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Well, the longer, the longer a meeting goes on, the more you have a tendency probably to, you get into a dialogue and you can forget that. But, you know, when I've turned it, and, believe me, I don't like watching this on TV. I don't watch very long, but I, and it's more for the, you know, how it looks and how it sounds. That's why I even watch it. And this gentleman is exactly right. There's a lot of times when, when, and that's why, that's why even, you know, when we do all these awards and things that...
Yeah, there's stuff that's going on and the people are watching on TV and they can't hear a thing that we're doing in it. So that's why we should have somebody reading that into the microphone for these people.
Yep, right.
We're giving awards to people. This is one example. We're giving awards to our, or recognition to our employees for things that they've done and the public can't hear a word of what we're doing.
Or saying.
For, in our recognition of these people. So, you know, but it, and I think, Wayne, I think each TV can be different, you know, as far as that goes too. But I do notice that whenever, you know, Frank's talking and he speaks, you can hear him clearly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But I, it's a good point. I just don't know about this, wearing the stuff on your...
Yeah, I agree. But I guess I thought, since he made the suggestion, if you wanted us to pursue that and look at costs and different things.
We need to try to resolve it because we've heard that since the beginning. People have had a hard time hearing us.
And, you know, it's a demotivator, frankly. This is a good idea to television, televise them and it brings the people closer. But if they sit there and watch it and they're frustrated with it, then it gives a negative connotation to it. And so we should, we should. Maybe we'll at least look at the system, see if there is something that maybe can project better, or we'll take a look at that. So.
Just, you know, I think another thing, you've got to be careful. You have these things on and it's going to pick up every cough we do and everything else that we do too.
And when you don't want to be heard, like you said.
Right.
So.
Maybe Vicki needs to prepare a little note to be put right here. Yes, put it by each microphone.
She used to, yeah, see?
Jenny's holding up something over there.
We've got this too. I'm not sure if this can work, but this would be a good...
For the awards.
Answer for the awards or anything we do.
Yeah.
If, I'm assuming this is here for a reason. So I, it feels pretty light. I don't know if there's batteries in it, but...
That's, that's actually your club to be able to...
It's my order.
Brian?
Okay, thank you. That gives us something to move forward with. Maybe the next item I'll talk about too is, sure, Bill Burquist talked to me about the fact that the dispatch board has voted to move forward with purchasing the facility that they're in. They had entered a contract a few years ago of a five-year contract and then they had an option to buy it at the end of that. And the purchase price is like $300,000 and their pay each year is right around $100,000, maybe $108,000, which includes a $33,000 common area maintenance. So the price seems to be quite reasonable and it is the board's decision to move forward on that. But he, we talked about it and felt that we wanted to inform you about it. They have put the vote on hold until next week because they wanted the entities to be informed of this. It seems like financially, it's really a wise decision to make. They can purchase the building for $300,000. That's about three years and they're going to amortize it over five years and the payment will be quite a bit less and things. So.
Is the, is there money in their coffers or do they, we each have to come up with a share of that?
No, Mr. Chair. What the intent is, they're going to the bank to take out a loan, a five-year loan, to purchase it. And their payment will, still with the maintenance fee or the commons area, over a five-year, their payment will be $93,000. And right now, they're paying $108,000. And so, and then they'll have ownership.
Yeah, after five years, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
We negotiated that 10 years ago and the price was there 10 years ago when we opened the dispatch center. So, and we figured at the time, unless everything fell apart, it would be a great deal for all the communities to purchase it at that time. And then you always have the option, if you need to move it sometime in the future, you've got a sellable, you know, property that you own. So invest in a new facility at some point in time.
And I think you've seen what property prices in downtown Fargo have done. So it's been a, it's a wise investment. It was a good agreement.
It sounds like a really good deal.
Do we need to act on that?
No, you don't.
Sounds good.
Okay. Did attend the insurance committee and that was well-informed today. I think Commissioner Ingersoll also talked about, I don't know, it was Commissioner Gross talked about attending the metro study, the COG, the Metro COG Study. I attended about an hour of that the other morning. And that was, it was interesting. It was talking about what the future needs are in 2040 and they wanted the public input as to, you know, where the major arteries are going to be, what bridge crossings, train crossings, interstate flows, where the growth, they expect the growth to be, where the businesses are, things. It was, it was, it was quite enlightening. So I enjoyed that. It was, it was, it was quite enlightening, so I enjoyed that. Also went on the tour, as I mentioned, and Commissioner Gross covered that fairly well. I think we, we had some good conversation about the projects that had taken place and things, so went well. The land management meeting, which led up to the full diversion board meeting, we talked about some interesting things there, and, and I did put some information in your mailbox, Commissioner Everett, since you, since you had to be gone from that. But the one issue that I think is really important to us is that this was the, the diversion board approved the first Minnesota hardship buyout, which I think is, is, is kind of important because the, it just, it, it just really shows that the diversion authority is moving forward in fairness to Minnesota and North Dakota, and we know that the dollars right now are coming from the state of North Dakota with the sales tax and things, and also the state legislature. A $70 million budget, and I know Commissioner Campbell mentioned that, but that's a huge, huge amount of money, and they're moving forward with the, the dike planning and, and construction in 2014, and, and there's a lot happening there, a lot happening.
Yeah, if I can, just in regards to that, that property that was bought in, on Minnesota on hardship deal, there were, there was some additional acreage involved with that as well that John had, has to do with, you know, potentially some tillable land and everything. I, I certainly hope that they'll look to Clay County for our opinion as to, and they know they're not going to need all of that land down the road. So I thi, I hope they will look to us in terms of what we think, how, how that should be handled for the future, whether we lease that for, for tillable land, or we wanted to sell it outright to some...
Right.
...producers, whatever it be, but I just, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to bring that up.
Yeah, and that's a good point, too. And what the full board talked about was reselling some of these homes now that are not in the footprint of the dike that's being built around Ox Board, be the same with, with Comstock, because they will have to purchase land, not just easements on these, because, you know, to be certifiable, you have to be owned by a public entity. And Commissioner Campbell brought up the fact that, you know, let's not jump too quickly on, on liquidating some of this when we don't know the exact footprint of the dykes and things. And I think that's wise to move cautiously on those things. But yeah, there was like three par, three additional parcels. There was a total of four parcels with this Minnesota property. They aren't big parcels, but they're farmable and different things, so, but it was just a, a much cleaner sale and to allow the person to move on with their life, took by all four of the parcels on it. And, and that was recommended from the land management early on, the hardship committee and so on, so. I think things are moving along there quite well. And I, I don't know, I guess, I just sense that people are really sensitive to working out something with these landowners, and, and I think that came over really loud and clear in the diversion meeting last Thursday, was that this isn't a slam dunk, push forward. This is, we want to move forward, make progress, but we want to do it in unison with the communities. And I think that came through loud and clear. Pick meeting they had this morning, and that was already tou, touched on. We also had a informal meeting of the, studying the, the surveyors and the recording of corners and different things like that. And what we would really like, and we mentioned this, I think, last time when Commissioner Everett was not here, and, and since he brought up the idea, what we felt as a committee, it would be good if we could have a couple commissioners join us in that committee so that we could come up with some good, solid recommendations that the board would most likely buy into if we have input from the commissioners in a committee setting. And I know we've been looking at several options or several issues with that, and we'd like to discuss that further in committee with a couple commissioners, because we've got some ideas, I think, that we can probably, for about the same amount of money, maybe elevate the number of corners and, and looking at the bounty system and different things like that, so. And Jenny and I had talked about that, and, so did you have other comments on that, Jenny?
I think you covered it pretty thoroughly.
Okay. So if you wouldn't object, Mr. Chair, if we could...
Well, I, I, I agree. I just, I, I just think this is an issue where I would, I would certainly be satisfied just having one commissioner on it.
Oh, okay.
You know, we, we still kind of got to watch our, our budgets and our per diems and all that stuff, too.
Sure.
And I, I think this is an issue where John would be the right person for it. He's brought it up, he's had some really good thoughts on it. I think, you know, I would move that we have John represent us on a, on a committee to review that issue.
Second.
With per diem, by the way, that would be my...
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
John, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members, and that, that'll really be helpful, and we, we think we can move right along on that, and, and we think it's important to move right along on it for various reasons that we'll discuss, so.
Mr. Chair? I have one question on the, the Metro COG thing. Is it, would it be wise and is it possible to have them come and kind of update the, the whole commission about the long-term plans and also the public that way?
Yeah, you know, that would be wise. That's, that's a very good suggestion. We'll, we'll contact Wade and, and ask for that. So that's good, that's very good.
I can, I can check with them on the meeting. I think we've got a meeting coming up Thursday.
Okay.
So I can check with them, but I don't know if they've got the plans yet. They were just getting ideas as far as what they want to do. I mean, I talked to Wade about coming over here and talking to us about it, but I think they're just going to take all the ideas that came forward from these three meetings and see which are the good plans or which they should pursue and stuff.
Okay. I thought it'd generate more ideas, too, from, from this group.
It did. I talked to Wade about it.
You know, and I, I, the reason I like what John's saying here, too, is I, you know, I didn't get a chance to go to those, but I am sure that part of that 20-year plan is also additional high-traffic corridors around our perimeters, which that also then brings John to what we know is going to be coming forward again with something down south in terms of a crossing of, of the red.
Yes.
And, you know, our, our commission obviously is, is very interested in where that would go. And, you know, for that matter, as, as that plan moves forward, I think we want to remain, this, this county board should remain an active participant in, in the choosing of that location, I guess. So I don't know, whatever that process needs to be through Metro COG, we just need to make sure that, that, you know, we're well-informed as, as that moves forward.
Very good point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Jenny, anything?
No, thank you.
Vicki? Anything else for the good of the order, gentlemen? Roger.